All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries. I'm not sure who I'm turning it over to, but we're here this morning, this afternoon, to talk about complete streets as they apply to Waterloo, Iowa. So whoever's starting it, Brian, please start.
All right. Good evening. I'm Brian Schoen with the Intercog office, and I serve on the policy committee. If you recall, we were here in December and talked with you a bit about a complete streets policy, and walked you through kind of the 10 tenants, showed you some photographs, had a nice slideshow presentation. And what we're here today, or this evening, to do is to walk through a draft of a policy that the committee has put together. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. It was out middle of last week, I guess it was, and I think that's about our third iteration with regard to that policy. We've taken input from the committee, from staff, as well as have looked at a number of other communities around the nation, actually, that have put together these complete street policies. And so what I'm going to do today is just walk you through, there's a packet hopefully at each one of your stations. We've got a few extra here that, we made them slides for PowerPoint, but then got to looking at it and thought, maybe a little unnecessary for a four slideshow. So what we'll do is just walk you through it. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at the policy, as I've said, and then we hope to be back then in a week and talk to you about potential adoption of said policy. And so we'll leave it open for comments and questions and so on and so forth, and I'll try and walk you through it real quickly. So if you want to look at your slideshow presentation, let's look at that first slide. Let's go ahead, and I've covered that, and jump to the next slide. Just as a reminder, as part of the Blue Zones certification process, we need to make sure the city of Waterloo puts together and adopts a complete streets policy. We're not going to do an ordinance, we're going to do actually a resolution and a policy. And so that's an acceptable form of that. And there, at the second slide, you'll see our timetable for doing that. Again, walking back to August of last year, and then our presentation in December, today's meeting, and then potentially next week if everything goes well this evening. Just to walk you through the policy again, didn't want to read it to you, didn't want to spend too much detail on it, but wanted to make sure you understood that there were 10 tenants, that we follow that National Complete Streets organization, and what they outline or require for a complete streets policy. We have set a vision in that policy, that's kind of the broad statement. We have specified that we're going to address all users, so all persons, all ages, all abilities. We are going to address all projects. We did talk a lot about how we're going to deal with all the projects and so on and so forth, certainly. We've talked about exceptions or exemptions to the policy, and we looked at some of the national models out there in terms of defining when would we not apply this policy to a potential street project. And so we've looked at those, and we've listed them for you in the slides because we think they're important enough of the 10. Exemptions is probably right near the top in terms of making sure that we all understand when we would not apply the policy. Most notably, when there's no motorized use, non-motorized use there, when the cost would be excessive, when there might be safety issues, when we don't foresee any future use of those other modes other than automobile, or where there may be legal impediments or regulatory impediments, and then where there may be alternate facilities out there that may be very nearby. And by facilities, we mean other streets that may be nearby. Obviously, we want to create a network for all modes, not just for vehicles, but certainly for bicycles, for transit, for all the uses. Jurisdictionally, we changed the title of this from you a little bit last time, and we wanted to make sure that everybody understood that when a project comes forward, we need to talk with the jurisdiction that's actually guiding or financing the project. Certainly, this policy is set up or drafted that the local projects, the city-driven projects will follow the policy. And then any state or federal projects, we want to make sure that we do our level best to apply the policy, and we're going to ask that they are strongly encouraged to participate and abide by the policy. Thus far, I think we've got some pretty good examples. You've got a couple that, well, you've got one that I think is working towards construction or under construction, and a couple that you're talking about that I think at the next level, DOT or beyond that, are actually pretty participatory in including complete streets, infrastructure, and complete streets ideas or elements. So certainly want that to continue. Design criteria, we're going to rely on state and federal design criteria that's out there right now, until or unless the city develops its own design criteria. And then context, we need to make sure that this policy fits Waterloo. We can look at lots and lots of different examples, and I think our committee has tried pretty hard by including not only committee members that are kind of from the broad walk of the community, but also the staff members and so on and so forth. But we want to make sure that the context is appropriate. And then the last two elements of the policy are probably the most challenging, I think, not only from our committee's perspective, but also if you look at some of the policies nationally, there are a number of them in states not too far away from here that include or don't include the performance standards as well as the implementation. And we've got to make sure we get that in there in order to comply, and that we meet those Blue Zone requirements, but also that we meet the National Complete Streets criteria. So performance standards, certainly, we've got a number listed in there of measures, if you will, that tell us whether or not we're doing a good job. And then the implementation piece, probably the centerpiece of our implementation strategy in this draft policy is the creation of a complete streets advisory committee that will work then with a couple of department heads. That complete streets advisory committee then will provide recommendations to those department heads, who then in turn will provide recommendations to the mayor and council. And so we've set up a structure. We're not going as far as individual projects, we're not going as far as bylaw creation. All those things need to happen, but in this policy, we're just trying to get them in place, get them established. And so that's a bit of an overview of the policy itself. Again, it's pretty broad, it's pretty general, and the details then really are to some degree left to that complete streets committee as well as to the city itself to kind of iron through. And that's what I've got. Sue, you want to give them just an update, or you want to take questions on this first, Mayor?
Why don't we just see if anybody's got any questions so far? Brian, council? For Brian, just regarding the first 10 tenants, Mr. Schmidt?
Just real quickly, Brian, that complete streets advisory committee, that would be a advisory-only, just recommending, thought process, no authority, no...
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
Thanks.
We've even, we even in our discussions, we're talking about whether or not they would be an included element of the city's COPE. Would you codify them, make them a commission, would they just be an advisory committee? And what we've opted for here in the draft was an advisory committee for now. At some point in time, that may change. A couple of things about the policy. There are a number of planning documents that are being worked on, pedestrian plan, long-range transportation plan, things like that. That may cause a pause, I guess, if you will, and we may have to back up and look at this policy a little bit. As we move forward with a committee of people and start interacting, committee, staff, elected officials, we may have to revise the policy and make it fit as well. And so we want it, we want it to be looked at as being an amendable document, too. Obviously, it is a planning process that we're going through, and hopefully, at some point in time, if the city sees the opportunity grant-wise, that they would take this planning process that is the policy and make it part of the justification for a grant for different kinds of opportunities, certainly out there for financing. One of the big things we've got to talk about in that committee is financing as well.
Mr. Brian?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
To be chosen as a Blue Zone community, was there a monetary award to be given to the cities that were chosen? Was there a dollar amount of, there wasn't any money?
No. Well, there was not a monetary award given to the city. We have, I'll let Sue talk about that, but we have received personnel that are paid for, we have received some funding for some programs, but Blue Zones did not give the city of Waterloo money. Am I correct?
You are correct, yep. We do have a budget to help with community gardens. We actually have, obviously, a budget for staff, and we have resources that are available to us, not only with our local staff here, but through Iowa staff. We had the Dan Burden visit, those types of things for the studies. But as far as a check that's written out to Waterloo, no.
So us to meet policy, is this going to be costly to the city to do all the things that's required of us?
I'm going to let Brian explain, yes and no.
Right, right. I think that's one of the things that this committee is going to have to look at is the financing mechanism, certainly. We know doing some of these things could be pretty costly, and so that was an admission, really, of the committee itself, was that we were going to leave the financing discussion to progress with that committee itself as they move forward, as they get appointed, as they sit down and start their processes. They're going to have to come up with strategies. How are we going to make these things real? And one of those things, one of the strategies is going to be the dollars.
And I will tell you, Ron, in the MPO, there is a lot of advocacy for complete streets, which is in the MPO being part of the major funding in a lot of these projects. So with us adopting, hopefully, this policy will give us more of an advantage in receiving more funding to complete these projects. But it gives me comfort that right off the bat, you make one of the exceptions excessive cost to be something that needs to be looked at.
Yes. Other questions, comments?
Thank you. Sue, did you have something to add?
Well, first of all, I want to compliment Waterloo's staff that's been working with our committee for the help that they provided, and also the gentleman from Intercog. We've got a great committee of folks that are working on trying to help Waterloo become a Blue Zones destination. And I am really impressed with when we get together, it seems like we ask each other the hard questions first in the committee, and that's the way it should be, because then when we come forth with an opportunity like this, hopefully, we've looked at all of the different things that were necessary to look at. So I did, last time I was in front of you, I was able to present you with some great news that we had hit our engagement number in the city of Waterloo, which was pretty impressive considering it was such a big number of 11,000 people. And I am actually going to leave these with you guys tonight, too, as just a little summary. And of course, we have Cedar Falls and Waterloo both on here, just for a comparison. And I did want to point out that now 120% of our work sites in Waterloo, and I should explain that just a little bit. Our leadership team focused on 20 large organizations in Waterloo to call our top 20. And we were tasked with trying to get all of those work sites to make changes within their work site to implement well-being for their employees. And so our hope was that we were going to get 10 of those, and actually, we just today found out we're at 13 now of our top 20. So that is just a huge pat on the back to the city of Waterloo. We are the only city that's seeing that progress, so not to be competitive with others, but I'm just saying that we are the first city to see that type of progress in work sites. And then also, all of our grocery stores, with the exception of the large box grocery stores, all of our locally-owned have completed their designation to be a Blue Zones grocery store. And we had another school, Kitterell Elementary, that has become a Blue Zones destination school since the last time I presented in front of council, too. So great things happening, and I think the point that I want to make with this is that a lot of people in Waterloo are really embracing this, and they are really excited about Blue Zones project. So two quick things that I did want to share on the economic kind of development side of things. We've had several businesses contact us now that have either hired or interviewed with incoming prospective employees that were excited because this was a Blue Zones community. And we have been receiving quite a few calls from parents saying, when is my child's school going to become a Blue Zones school? Because they do see the value of what is happening. So again, thank you to the folks that were behind me. All I have to do is come and give an update, they're really doing all of the work. So we appreciate the help of the city staff and Intercog helping with this process. And if you have any questions ever with the Blue Zones project and how we're coming along, please feel free to get in contact. And I will leave these here as just a brief summary, and if anybody would like them, they are welcome. Any questions from anyone?
I don't think so. Sue, I'm sorry, I shouldn't answer. Council, you have questions of Sue?
Good job.
The timeline is this today, just to kind of introduce us to complete streets. The policy is included in the packet. We will have that on next Monday on the agenda to adopt this as policy.
Yes.
And are you intending on coming back for another work session prior to that, or will you just be here to answer any questions during the council meeting when that comes up?
Yep, we can just be here to answer any questions and have our representatives here with us, too.
Very cool. You're doing great work, and as I've watched this progress, Blue Zones has gone from just being a kind of a quirky little concept to the real deal, and we're doing very well.
It's not just a catchphrase anymore.
I'm sorry?
It's not just a catchphrase anymore.
No, it's certainly not, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
So, council, I would really urge all of you to kind of delve into this and take a look at it and study it. If you have questions regarding the policy, please contact me, or contact Kevin, or Brian, or Sue, or somebody with Blue Zones, or Eric up in Planning Office is very knowledgeable about this. So we're looking forward to it. Thanks, Sue, thanks, everybody, good job.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. We're adjourned. Thank you, council. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome all to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, June 3rd. Can anybody imagine, it's June already, for crying out loud? Anyway, welcome. We have a good crowd in chambers tonight, and welcome to all of those that might be watching us on our public access television. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hert?
Here.
Motion. Hang on.
I'm ready.
If you all would please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Kent Shankle, our Director of Cultural and Arts Commission, is going to lead us in the pledge tonight. Kent, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hert?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and I'm going to just read through this. We have a 13A because the open bid inadvertently missed on May 28, 2013, and that was a request for proposal for demolition site clearance services, no regulated assessments containing materials for 209 Jefferson Street. And also, I'd like to add to this agenda a motion to adjourn to executive session number 17 at the end. I want to remove the proclamation declaring June 9th through 16th, 2013, as Waterloo Museums Week. So with the amended agenda, I'd also make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 28, 2013, to regular session.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding either the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B11. Also with the approval of that consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $2,603,851.30, 2,603,851.30.
Second.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding consent agenda either? Roll call, hold, please. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes, but I would need to abstain on a payment of $95, Schmidt Telecom Partners.
Okay. Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hert?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Before we move on, I know that Mr. Warren Wortham is with us tonight. Warren, why don't you stand up, please, so people can see. Warren has accepted the responsibility of being placed on our library board of trustees. It's a very important position, and we require, we, very heavily on our trustees and our volunteers to run our organization. So Warren, thank you for that, we appreciate it, and we look forward to a long relationship for you. So thank you for stepping up and volunteering, much appreciated. And we also have, I'm not sure if Dharmendra Patel is in the audience or not. Dharmendra is a new appointment to our Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau, so congratulations also. And that's it, I believe. We can take item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two, I would like to make a motion to reopen the hearing, and that is for the creation of the Crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very good. The hearing regarding the Crossroads TIF is now reopened. Madam Clerk, I know that it mentions on our agenda that there are no objections on file, but just as late as today, we received some objections and some support. So there are letters and emails on file in the clerk's office regarding the Crossroads TIF that are both for and against saying. With that in mind, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Crossroads TIF? Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes if you can.
Thanks. My name's Eric Johnson. I'm an attorney here in town. I represent some of the landowners that are affected by this TIF, the Shane Felder family, which developed the crossroads originally, and then the owners of the old Kmart Plaza. Obviously, they're in favor of this proposal. We think that this is the type of incentive that will help property that on its own wouldn't develop or wouldn't develop in the timeframe or in the manner that the city would like it to develop, especially recycled properties, places like that old Kmart Plaza that's not virgin ground anymore, that needs to have work done to it to bring it back and make it competitive with other properties out there. We think that's a great use, and there's a couple on the backside of crossroads. But then, you know, the backside of crossroads, we think is also appropriate. That's land the Shane Felder family developed that over 40 years ago. That sat there, and it, on its own, hasn't quite rolled over to be developed, and we think with the push from this, we will be able to hopefully develop it and hopefully put additional money into the city's coffers. So glad to answer any questions, the council member.
Council, any questions for Mr. Johnson? Thanks, Mr. Johnson, appreciate it. Others, for or against the Crossroad TIF?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
And receive.
And receive oral comments?
And written.
And written, excuse me.
Second.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to add to this? Mr. Schmidt?
I guess I've got a couple. First, following up to what Mr. Johnson said, and I would think this would be for Noel, hasn't there been some recent development in that area, or is that development that's happened in the last year, is that within the current TIF?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Yes, there's been the redevelopment of the former restaurant site there on San Marnon into the, I'm trying to think of the old Country Kitchen. And then the Bonanza site as well is being redeveloped. Those are both on the San Marnon frontage, so it would be in the Crossroads TIF. Of course, what Mr. Johnson was talking about, of course, is a little bit more of the backside, which is the La Porte Road area, which we believe will need some work in the future for some improvements to that roadway, which could be helped by the TIF if we choose to do it that way. But also that they're not getting as much visual as much as the San Marnon corridor is, so we think the TIF will help from that standpoint.
So the BioLife site, would that be in the current TIF also?
Yes, it would. It does include the entire Crossroads Shopping Center and the Circle Ring around it, including the lots on the other side of the ring.
So at the work session last week, and I think a lot of us are in favor of whatever we need to do to continue the economic development out in that area, but at the work session last week, I think you talked a little bit about, in the event that after some period of time, the money generated by the TIF has met all the needs of that district, that any excess funds could be turned back to the city and those who go into the general fund, is that correct?
The city has the option, and when there's projects in there creating TIF revenue, to release money back into the general fund, and of course, that's released back into the county's end of the school funds as well, so it's all divided up like it normally would be. You know, quite honestly, if it were all developed and the city were to have no more expenses out there, the city can end the TIF at some point. But we could also definitely release money as we saw fit, as long as we had enough to pay any bills we had in the TIF area through improvements. And again, there's a lot of improvements in place now where we wouldn't necessarily have any immediate improvements needed unless we had a large project that needed nor roadways or something of that nature.
So have there been instances where the city has received money from TIFs like that and gone into the general fund?
And release funds, yes. The city releases funds, I know from the Northeast Industrial Park area, and Michelle could probably talk about some more releases we've had from TIF areas.
Mr. Do you want to...
Wait, Michelle.
Michelle Wheaton, our Chief Financial Officer. We did, we have released some amount of revenue from the Northeast side. That's the only one I'm really aware of right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Just a comment, I'm supporting this. Business goes where business is most welcome, and all communities are doing whatever they can to encourage business to come to their, to their community. So we need to do whatever we can to keep Crossroads strong.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Welper. Mr. Greenwood?
Several questions. What is the timeline of the TIF? What's the length of this TIF going to be? What, how much money are the... What, how much money are they looking, are we looking to raise? And what are we going to use the money for? Are we going to use it for incentives, infrastructure?
It's an economic development TIF, so by state law, it'll have a 20-year timeline. The, the TIF policy would be to give one year of 50% tax rebates for every $1 million of new taxable valuation created. There is also a clause and therefore a site that meets the definition of brownfield or grayfield by state code requirements, and the council could give more because obviously it'll be more, a little more expensive to redevelop some of those sites, including demolition, asbestos removal, possible relocation of infrastructure and things like that. The projects that we listed in the plan were primarily street improvement projects and some other infrastructure, which we think we might need in that area going forward. So obviously, we can give the incentives back to the companies, obviously through the tax rebate to get them to locate there. But then the, the remaining years when they start paying full, or even the beginning years where they're paying the 50% portion, that's funds all being created in the TIF to go towards infrastructure improvements or other costs that we have, want to move forward with.
This, to clarify, so I'm sure I understand this right, but so the existing value of that, of these properties, that's, that's the base?
Correct.
And so that continues to pay the, the school tax, the county tax, the city tax as is? Anything that is new, new evaluation of the improvements, that goes into paying the, the TIF fund?
Correct. Anything above the base, the city's collecting 100% of to go pay our,
Right.
our infrastructure costs and things like that.
So we're just putting money out on the come line to go say, to say, we're getting our existing tax money that we would get and we're going to just get 50% of the new valuation. Am I understanding that correct?
Correct. For the beginning years, then we'll get full valuation right after that. I mean, essentially what the, what this is going to do is it puts us in a position, like you've done in the past, where the council has the option to enter into development agreements with specific projects and how to structure those and make them work.
So I think some of the phone calls I got is that the existing, they were thinking the existing valuation that we're getting 100% taxes on now would also be be cut in half if there, if it was TIF'd. That's, that's incorrect.
The money that's, the existing development that's out there continues to go and pay the city schools and county.
I'd like to clarify that 50%, though. 100% incremental revenue goes to the TIF. We can choose to use it or not. And if we only do incentives, if we only do, let's say, a tax rebate to somebody at 50%, then that's fine. But if we also do other improvements funded with bonds, like we build a street or something, we're going to, the other 50% is going to be used to pay back those bonds. So I don't want you to assume that 50% of the increment's going to be released to the other taxing entities because that may or may not be the case. We don't, I don't know that yet until we see what we're going to invest there.
Good point. Thank you, Michelle. Counsel, do you have any further questions, anyone? We have a question. Yes, sir, please.
Forrest Dilvo, 1725 Huntington Road. As I recall, some of the people that are protesting their taxes, the Crossroads is one of those that's protesting their taxes. Should that come significantly reduced, what number are we going to use as that bottom line number that Noel just spoke of for the amount of taxes they're going to pay? Are we going to use the new number or the old number? If there is a new number, please understand.
Forrest, I'm not sure how to answer it.
Jim Wall, City Attorney. The use of incentives would require the signing of a minimum assessment agreement. The minimum assessment agreement will put the floor at the agreed number and they can't protest that during the life of the agreement. Somebody's always entitled, once the agreement runs out, to go back and tell the assessor they're charging the wrong amount, and that's what Crossroads is doing.
But I, I don't think that quite answers my question. If the new tax assessment comes in, if they are heard in court tomorrow and it's reduced 25%, is that the number we're going to use, that number, or are we going to?
We wouldn't use that number at all. It's not relevant to Crossroads Center if you're talking about the owner who owns the center, because they're not asking for an incentive now. If they ask for an incentive, we'd set a number and write it on a paper.
I'm talking about the TIF money.
Yeah, yeah.
The base for the whole neighborhood, everything in that district?
Thank you for the word, the base.
Yeah, the, the whole district has a tax base that's comprised of every individual property. They go up and down every year. Those, that, that base won't change. It's always calculated the same way it has been. If somebody asks to lower it, it goes down. If the rates go up in that area, they go up.
And, and, and properties that would be in the TIF would have the minimum assessment agreement, so they cannot protest.
If they get any advantage from that TIF.
Understood? Good question. Anyone else? Been a motion in a second to close the hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution finding that the proposed urban renewal area is an economic development area, that the area is appropriate for one or more urban renewal projects, that a feasible method exists for the location of families who will be displaced from the area into decent, safe, and sanitary dwelling accommodations within their means and without undue hardship to such families, and that the whole urban renewal plan conforms to the general plan of the city as a whole.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the creation of the Crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries also. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion passes. We have a new Crossroads TIF.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for the sidewalk inspection and repair program, Zone 3. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file?
We do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the sidewalk repair program? Just step to the microphone, please. Give us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name's Eric Merchant, 1540 Oriole Avenue. And I'd like to say I'm against the sidewalk repair. We just went through a heavy flood. A lot of people are cleaning up and going through a lot of expense. And I don't know if the, and I don't know if the flood is finished, the ground saturated. And I was wondering if we could just get a push, maybe do this again in 10 years.
Okay, Eric, I, there's two fellows over here, Mike and Wayne, that are sitting right there in the front row. I doubt that we're going to suspend this for another 10 years. But if you have a specific issue with your sidewalk, whether it's moved or cracked or whatever and you think it's due to flooding and you'd like some time to fix it, that is a possibility. But I, I don't think we're going to have any interest in postponing this for 10 years. Okay? Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Bonnie Sujoy. I live at 730 Noel Avenue. I have seven blocks of sidewalk that need to be replaced.
What was, what was the address again, Bonnie Sujoy?
730 Noel.
Okay.
I bought the house in January of last year through Habitat for Humanity. At this time, I just don't have the, the city estimated at $1,500. I just don't have that kind of money. I would like an extension.
Okay.
Even a few months, whatever, just so I can get some money together to, I would like the opportunity to do it myself as opposed to going through the repair program the city offers.
Sure. And, and I will direct you, Bonnie Su, as I did Eric. If you would give your name, please, to Mike or Wayne there, and they'll follow up with you, see what the extent of is, is the, the issue. And we always try to work with people when we can on those kind of things.
Okay, thank you so much.
Just please give them your name and address and they'll be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing proposed repairs to sidewalks. Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution adopting proposed resolution of necessity as proposed or amended. Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Counsel, number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication, a notice of a public hearing for the rehabilitation of taxiway B at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four, us fixing some taxiways at the airport? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, it's another roll call.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, and start the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to the airport director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three bids tonight for this work at the airport. We do not have an estimate on it.
First bid is from Allied Manats Group LLC of Charles City, Iowa. And the bid bond is for 5%.
I was just informed that Doug, you do have, Doug Schindel from ACOM, you have an estimate for us on this and it just didn't make it for the paper?
Yes, we do. It's, the engineer's estimate is $611,056.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Thorson. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
And the total base bid is for $665,654.15, 665,654.15. The next bid is from Cedar Valley Corp. LLC of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $584,937.40, 584,937.40. And the final bid is from Kay Cunningham Construction Company Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $599,364.15, 599,364.15.
Eric, do you want to take that in lieu of Brad, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, a notice of public hearing for a request by Family Video Movie Club, Inc. to rezone 1.24 acres located at 3026, that's 3032 Amesboro Avenue, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C1 CZ Conditional Zoning Neighborhood Commercial District for the purpose of establishing a pizza restaurant on the property. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to this item?
I do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against some pizza on Amesboro? Second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and also add the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time ordinance amending number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a rezone on certain property. Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules. Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greenwood?
I make the motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of a public hearing that's for the development agreement with Wendell Gaines to sell city-owned property located at 532 Sumner Street for $1 plus cost for rehabilitation of the residential property.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file?
I do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against rehabbing 532 Sumner Street? A second time.
I'll make that motion then to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion adopt resolution authorizing said sale.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Make the motion and adopt a resolution approving said development agreement and to authorize mayor and city clerk to execute that said document.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Could we take seven, eight, and nine, please, on the resolution?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number seven, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award of hotel motel discretionary funding to the following entities: Aspire Therapeutic Writing in the amount of sixty-five-hundred dollars and Waterloo Police Department Event Overtime in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Item number eight is a motion approving change order number two for a net increase of two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for work performed by Story Construction of Ames, Iowa, for the disinfection facility contract number eight-seventeen. And number nine is adopting a resolution approving total acquisition contract with Dennis Patterson for partial numbers eight-nine-one-three dash one-six dash four-five-one dash zero-three-one, eight-nine-one-three dash one-six dash four-five-one dash zero-three-two, and eight-nine-one, eight-nine-one-three dash one-six dash four-five-one zero-three-three, lots twenty-eight through thirty of Byrd's subdivision in Sherwood Park in the amount of seventy-three thousand dollars plus up to six hundred dollars in closing expenses in conjunction with the Sherwood Park Recreation Area and Hartman Reserve Nature Center additions project and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding seven, eight, or nine? Madam Clerk, roll call vote on all, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, uh, motions carry. Let's do the next three, ten, eleven, and twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award of bid to Soft Play LLC of Huntersville, North Carolina, in the amount of fifty thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars for the purchase of Cedar Valley Sportsbook indoor play equipment. And, and aside, is that that is being purchased entirely with private donations. And item eleven is a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to Networks, Inc. of Windsor Heights, Iowa, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for the purchase of Edge Network Switches for the city phone system replacement project. And twelve is a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to KW Electric, Inc. Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for the network cabling project for the city phone system replacement project.
Second.
Very good, counsel, any questions on ten, eleven, or twelve? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Just, just, Madam Clerk?
Yes, so they can do thirteen and thirteen A right now.
Okay. Uh, we have a request to do thirteen and thirteen A, please, and let's do fourteen by itself. Mr. Hart?
On thirteen, I move to adopt a resolution approving memorandum of agreement with Waterloo Community School District in the amount of eighty-six thousand dollars to provide technology leadership, network services, and supplemental technology support services to the city and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And in thirteen A, uh, move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to community planning and development director for a review for the request for proposal for demolition and site clearance services, no regulated asbestos-containing materials for two-oh-nine Jefferson Street.
Second.
Very good, uh, I, I will just remind everyone, but thirteen A, I understand what your question is now, uh, is, we inadvertently missed a bid last week on, when the bids were open for demolition of, uh, two-oh-nine Jefferson Street. So, that's why we're adding that this, this week, uh, to open that one bid that was missed last week and we don't want to read fourteen until we read thirteen A. So, there you go. Uh, Madam Clerk?
The bid that was missed is from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa.
Did I take a vote on that? Or was it appropriate? Now, I've kind of lost my place. I don't think we voted on opening the bids.
Always do it again, you can always do it.
Yeah, we, we didn't take a vote on opening the bids, so Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, if you could please do that.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
The bid bond is for five percent. And the bid is for twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars, two-zero, comma, eight-zero-zero, point-zero-zero.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk, and that would be apparent that that bid is more than the sixty-one hundred dollars from Lehman, so we will, we will go ahead with item fourteen and read it as is.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Hart?
Move that we adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to Lehman Trucking and Excavating, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of six thousand, one hundred dollars and approving the contract bonds and certificates of insurance in conjunction with demolition services for two-oh-nine Jefferson Street and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Very good. Questions? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the chapter seven rental inspection program.
Second.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding this item? Mr. Greenwood?
There's an email I got today from, uh, Mark Pregler.
Okay.
Saying, uh, that, uh, that he's not necessarily asking for a work session, but he thought there was some conflicts and, and the irregularities and wording issues with the rental inspection program, when you compare it to the nuisance ordinance. Is that something we need to?
It is, Mr. Greenwood, and I've asked, I got the same email, and I've asked Mr. Pregler and Mr. Clark to get together. I'm not sure if they've had that opportunity yet, but, uh, I, I think that's the proper vehicle, proper method to do.
Do this today, if we come back and fix it, or?
We don't have to suspend the rules and we can pass this, we can pass it tonight and then read it next week, or whatever, so that's what I would prefer to do, but.
I, I think there's some more substantive language changes that are going to be necessary to coordinate with the crime property ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd rather a tabling motion for now.
Okay.
So that we don't have to, you know, do it all over again if we make changes midstream on the one, two, three passages.
Good point. So, uh, could somebody make that motion, please?
Make the motion to table it.
I move that we table the rental inspection program ordinance.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to table to item number fifteen, to work some of the language out and to have Mr. Clark speak with Mr. Pregler. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good, the motion to table is, uh, approved. Item number sixteen, please.
I'd like to make a motion instruct director of safety services to prepare specifications, bid documents, et cetera, for the purchase of uniform and equipment for Waterloo Police Department.
Second.
Questions, counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to-
Carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second.
It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing and bid opening as June seventeen, two thousand and thirteen, and instruct city clerk to publish notice, uh, specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, thank you, counsel. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. Time for oral presentations, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either to the mayor or to the council, now is the time to do so. Give us your name and your address and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I was wondering, has there been any citations written since, uh, nuisance ordinance went in? And is there any way we can get access to that without coming down here to find out?
Mr. Tralca, do you want to answer that, please?
Hi, uh, Dan Tralca, Director of Safety Services. I do have Mr. Chapman's email, email him information. We have sent out two notifications. Uh, one landlord today provided me with, uh, written documentation that they were taking action. Uh, the other landowner just, uh, was sent the notification today. But I will send that information to Mr. Chapman, I'll email it to him.
There's, there's been no tickets written, but there's been two properties that we've taken action on, Mr. Chapman.
Are you going to send those emails all the time, or?
Uh.
Or do I have to go?
Well, there is, there is no vehicle for you to access those records.
Okay, since it was public information, I thought maybe I could punch into computer and get it, that's what I meant, Buck.
I don't think there is.
No way?
Suzie, there's no act, there's no, I don't think there's any method to access.
Well, I guess I can call Dan every two weeks and find out, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll find a vehicle.
Is there anybody else?
Jerry Shatzer, eighteen-twenty-nine West Seventh. Every night I sit in this council, I think, what in heck is going on? Don't these people realize what's going on on the East Coast, Florida and the West Coast? Those people are going to want new places to live. And you don't have to spend all this money to attract them, they'll come because they have to come. How bad is on the East Coast? Well, I know one person's got a hundred-year-old mansion, fifty foot from the ocean. Waves come over a twenty-five-foot wall and took off the second balcony, twenty-five foot up. That was an old Greenwich. Another thing I get a kick out of is these, uh, people that come in and tell you how to do it, these, uh, what do you work with, these consultants? I have a friend who is a, is a consultant out east. And, uh, in my poor stature, he, uh, says the first thing a good consultant looks for is who's the power person? You ain't getting necessarily the best bargain, but he's going to make sure he gets rehired again, period. The other thing was, Mr. Welper said, these other cities are giving them things we got to compete. What's that? What's those things? Uh, Iowa City retail sales were down, or their housing sales were down nineteen percent three months ago because of property tax. You go to Jessup, as you're getting there on the right hand, you'll find that big burn way up in the air. There's million-dollar homes down in there. There's no bicycle trails, there's no, uh, athletic fields. The women usually go up to the school and they swim in the afternoons. They're finding businesses over in Waverly, they're finding businesses, oh, uh, Mr. Greenwood, I bet in Reinbeck is finding businesses he never thought were there. He's a shrewd businessman. He knows where to go. So, what I'm saying is, I wish to heck we would get realistic and say, we don't have to do this, this, and this. We can wait and they're going to come, whether they want to or not. And one other thing, which is a compliment, and I'm really happy to give compliments, the gentleman who handled the flood last week, I'm not sure everybody's happy, but I am, because of the parking back with that creek going through it, they did one good job. And I got to be honest, and there again, I have to take issue with Mr. Walther. I've been buying flood insurance, even though I don't need it, for the last ten years because of what I've been reading, what's going to happen. Well, it's finally here. And I might also make this mention, and I'm only directing this, Mr. Walther, because he keeps talking all the time about it, about, uh, hiring a consulting firm from Oklahoma, or where in the heck was that? This firm, you're paying money, they're going to get rid of this so you don't have to, uh, be involved in flood insurance?
Jerry, we got, you're about approaching your three minutes, so.
Okay, okay, well, I don't remember who it was, but remember this. Let's say that that firm does so you don't have to get twelve hundred dollars or whatever it is for flood insurance. Are they going to cover it then if they're wrong? And we get one of those rains that set over the top of us, like's been happening? Well, you all have a good day, I'm going to have a good day.
Thanks, Jerry.
And I shouldn't bother you anymore because I know you're smart people now.
Thank you, sir, very much. Anybody else?
John Sherbin, seventeen-fifteen Robin Road. Also have to thank all the city workers, uh, the last few days, we've had a really tough run and, uh, and, uh, they're very busy in our neighborhood. One thing I did notice, though, and I, I don't have any answers, uh, this is just sort of a question to throw towards the building or engineering. A lot of the new houses that are down in my area, which is around Oriole, Robin Road, Blackhawk, they all flooded in the basements. And, uh, this is nothing that nobody could do anything different about. What I don't understand is with all the technology that we have now about building these one-way valves and stuff that are maybe the, or you know, sump pumps or something, are not mandatory. And it's cost, whether we, we have to pay, uh, we don't have to pay to clean the house up, but, you know, we've got guys that have to go around and pick up all the, you know, the stuff, and those poor people, you know, this happens once a year. And I, and it's nothing that, you know, I, I understand, I mean, it's not what the city, uh, you know, it's not their obligation to be doing this, but maybe those rules and regulations that were really quick to make, maybe we should have, look into something to that effect. Secondary idea is, uh, when I came down Ainsborough tonight, uh, the traffic was backed from, from, uh, Ainsborough or, or, uh, University to Blackhawk Road, back on the other side of Blackhawk Road. Single lane, everybody's going west, turn left. Uh, the ones that were going straight, they were not quite that far along, and the ones that turned right, they always sort of blocked the thing, so I went across the backside there and snuck in. But, I know that, uh, Fletcher's closed and a few other ones, but we don't have any control or we don't change any of the traffic lights, they're all always the same. The traffic is backed up beyond belief on during our busy times and stuff, and maybe we could take a look at that. Uh, I mean, a lot of our, our streets that get shut off, they've still got traffic lights. I noticed Ridgeway, Ridgeway was blocked off and we still had traffic lights. We had to sit and wait for, uh, down there on Deer Road and area, so, thank you.
John, that's, uh, that's certainly something to think about as far as changing the lights there when Fletcher's closed, and I will check with Sandy and see if that's a possibility, that's a good idea, we'll check on that, thank you. I'm sorry? This, John, Jerry, let's, uh, we've got an executive session we got to get to, so if you don't mind, we're going to, just go ahead. Yeah, it's a backflow, backflow preventer. Thank you. Uh, does anybody else have questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Forrest Dilvo, seventeen-twenty-five Huntington Road. Just a quick one, on the rental inspections.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to require licensed for, in the proposal, to have a license if you own rental properties. If you have a rental property that's owned by a group, or if you have one that is family-owned by husband and wife and maybe kids, uh, you could have six or eight names on there or more. How are we going to address that? Just, that's something for them to work on, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Forrest, and I will find that out, because I, I'm assuming there will be one person in charge, but I don't know, we'll find that out. Kerrigan, if you could make note of that, please, maybe you already know, so. Good point. Yes, ma'am.
Cheryl Christiansen, seventeen-oh-two East Mitchell. Uh, three things. First of all, where is the demolition, uh, debris going from these buildings that are being torn down? Cheryl Christiansen, seventeen oh-two East Mitchell, uh, three things, first of all, where is the demolition, uh, debris going from these buildings that are being torn down? I have not yet got an answer from anybody. So I'd like to know that, and the property taxes are supposed to be paid from some of the casino money, and I see where that is being going and being distributed to other areas that doesn't seem to be owing property taxes, so. And the third thing is that on South Hackett Road, there's a lift station, and they've been coming out at night, um, from about ten until, I don't know, I guess, ten or twelve hours, it's noisy, they're, um, the residents there are, are not being able to sleep, many people in the area work, and this noise is going on all night long, and I'd like to know if there's.
Which pump station is that, Cheryl?
Something that could be checked into that, Mr. Getty's been out there before, and.
Location of it?
Uh, it's, it's in the two-hundred block of South Hackett Road. Thank you.
You bet, we'll, we'll check on, on the pump station, uh, unfortunately, those things do make some noise, and they've been working overtime recently, uh, I don't know where the demolition, uh, stuff goes, that's what we pay those people for, that we hire to demolish, is to dispose of it properly, and I'm sure they do that, uh, there's lots of requirements for that.
Well, I'm wondering if it's going in the dump area, or if it's traveling to some other location, or what's being done with it?
I would imagine it goes to the landfill, but I, I don't know, and it's, it has to be properly disposed of.
Okay, and then the one-on-Hackett Road, um, why are they doing it in hours through the night when people are working, can't they go out during the day and make their noise during the day?
What, what's?
On the lift station that's on South Hackett Road?
Well, I think those things run kind of twenty-four hours, but I will check on that also.
Thank you.
You bet, or they run as needed, I, I think, okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, motion to receive and file oral comments adjourned to executive session.
Uh, Mr. Greenwood?
Can I just make a comment about my vote on that, uh, TIF?
Sure.
At the crossroads?
Absolutely.
I just, I just want to, um, you know, number one, I am for economic development and, and for the city, and I, I run a business here, I run several businesses here, and, uh, I, I think it's, TIF needs to be taken a look at at a state level, because when you pit one city against another city and you're looking at retail, I, I think that's a slippery slope when you start bringing retail in, and I'm going to say in the next meeting, why don't you TIF my area, uh, for retail then? I think once you bring one, one retail area in versus another retail area in, it's a slippery slope. And, uh, in that area, in, in the last, you know, since I've been on the council, I think there's been, uh, four structures there that had been raised and then rebuilt, uh, the Country Kitchen, the Bonanza, uh, Boston Market, uh, and then CVS came in there and tore down a fire station and put, uh, building on the corner, so, it looks like, uh, the area can sustain, uh, retail activity, uh, this through some of the terror downs and rebuilds that are in the area. And I think the TIF should be, uh, used, uh, you know, it should be an extraordinary incentive, uh, for the city, a tool to use to, uh, redevelop very blighted, depressed areas that wouldn't, wouldn't ordinarily, um, uh, be rebuilt or, uh, be able to be, uh, sustainable if it didn't have that type of, uh, incentive in itself. I'm, I'm for development, I'm for, uh, you know, redoing that area, I, I just think it's, we're using the wrong tool.
Oh, those comments maybe should have been made before the vote was taken. Very good, thank you, Mr. Greenwood, does anybody else have any comments? Are we adjourning in proper order, Mr.?
The purpose of the executive session is for discussion of contract negotiations, that's a permissible reason for a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-point-one-seven-three, you should have a roll call.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Come on.